I will call to order this listening session of the Bloomington City Council. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. We had a couple of people call ahead of time and then a couple of walk-ins as well. So we have four people speaking tonight. We'll start with Sally. Julene, you'll be second. Bruce Chapey. Bruce, and then Mike, if you could. And to break this down, we try and make it as equal as possible for speakers to have as much the same amount of time. So we'll be looking at about seven minutes and maybe some short change per person so we can get out of here by our 6:15 time and get down to our city council meeting. So Sally, good evening. Welcome.
Okay, I sent you guys all what I'm reading tonight, so hopefully it's understandable. August 15, 2022, the mayor states, "Next time we talk, let's talk about actionable steps." As I questioned in the email sent to the mayor and council August 19, what action can be expected if the city does not state what has been and is happening? The first question I asked was if it's fraud when someone makes representations to incite someone to make a contract and then don't follow through with what they promised and/or proposed. The city was reluctant to answer, and when it did, the question had to be restated. In 2012, it was clear the building was not being used as proposed, and a council member asked the question about fraud. An answer provided in 2012 was that the person who spoke at the city council hearing probably did not represent the building was inaccurate. The person did represent the building, and what was proposed and what was stated at the hearing is not how the building was being used. And before action is taken, the city council needs to know this, state this, and state how it negatively impacts Smith Park and the neighboring community. The next set of questions I asked began to address the concerns that the proposed use was not accurate. I asked about the proposed hours and the use of the property within the first year. The proposed use was 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Ramadan was stated to be from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and yet the building was used through the night, including Ramadan. The city knows this, and I have stated previously the city should address it. What actionable steps can the city take? The city can begin by providing counsel with accurate information. Then counsel could state what has happened. Then the city could provide counsel with actionable steps to address the concerns. The following are a few examples of inaccurate information. City saying the plans to extend 81st Street East was for the property now known as Hunt Electric. Data indicated it was for Darrell Faruk. Former mayor said he contacted power company. While there is no data to support that statement. Staff provided counsel with cost of a new park entrance in 2013, as if the city would lose the entrance if it did not continue with the shared agreement, when the shared agreement at the time stated an easement for the original entrance would be provided. The police report dated March 16, 2019, did not accurately reflect the number of people, the traffic generated, or traffic issues. A council member commented, "There was work done on the parking lot to improve," when the work done was to address traffic from 82 Owen Park, and data indicated it increased the value of 82 Owen Park. Council member incorrectly states Darrell Faruk would be under no obligation to help pay for any of the driveway normally, when data indicates Darrell Faruk was to pay for the driveway. So that was all I sent you guys.
Yep, and I thank you for that, and I was happy to hear you read that. And that's what we've been discussing over the past, I think, 12 meetings now that you've talked. And my request, the last time we talked, was for you to bring forward actionable steps. What do you want to see happen? We've received the information. We understand the information. We've talked about it. I think there's been questions back and forth. But I think what everybody wants to know, what are you looking for the city to accomplish here? What are we trying to accomplish?
Again, for you to, you, counsel, to know what actually happened.
And good. And you've explained that, and we've talked about that, and we know what happened. We understand what happened.
I'm not seeing data that indicates that counsel knows what happened. In fact, I still feel that when I mention what's happening over there, negativity from the city. And then...
I think, let me ask, let me ask the council. Do you believe, it happened 12 years ago, a long time before we were on the council. Do you think you've got a grip or an understanding of what some of the decisions were, some of the discussions were, and what happened on it? I saw... Yeah, please.
To that point, I guess what I'm not understanding is, you know, you say you would like the council to have accurate information. To your satisfaction? To our satisfaction? To whose satisfaction? Like, is, is, is your, I mean, you, you say you want us to understand, and you feel like we don't have an accurate view of what's going on? What needs to happen? What do we need to do? What needs to happen between you and the city, you and the council, in order for that to be addressed? And what I'm getting at here is, it, to me, it seems as though you're saying, when you're satisfied, that's how this is resolved. And I think the challenge that we're running into is, we don't know how to satisfy you.
When the data matches your understanding. For instance, for instance, example?
Measuring our understanding.
An example, when I said, when the, when I brought forward that the previous attorney said that Hyder Aziz probably didn't represent the building. I send everyone the data. I'm sitting right here, and what is presented is a document that is superseded by another. So I'm here to let everyone know Hyder Aziz represented the building. The attorney was inaccurate. I have yet to really hear that confirmed in here. I mean, it's like I'm walking on eggshells, but Hyder Aziz represented the building, and our former attorney answered the question on fraud by saying he probably didn't represent the building, when he did. And then the document that our attorney, current attorney pulls up is one that was superseded by another, which is really perplexing, because why wasn't the current document pulled up? That made no sense.
So if we went around this room and just all said, "Okay, Sally, you're right," would that satisfy you?
Anyone concerned that when I said he represented the building, I sent everyone an email with the data, you know, and the inaccurate items pulled up, and I'm saying, "Well, you guys, I sent you all it. You all have it." And not one person said, "I did read it. Yes, yes, it's in there. The application's in there, and he's the one that applied for the conditional use permit. He's the one that was listed as applicant in the minutes, and he signed the restated site development agreement." So yes, he is representative of the building. That, that never came out.
Yep, we're at seven minutes.
I mean, just to be clear, it, it sounds like you're saying what you're looking for is for us to just say, "Okay, you're right."
It doesn't have to be, "I'm right." It would be, "I said that Hyder Aziz represented the building. I sent everyone the application, the minutes, and the site development, or restated site development agreement."
All right, Sally, we've got, we have to move on. We have enough.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good summer evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I know most of you are on this table, met with you. Thanks for having me. I, I sent an email to Matt with three, three things. I'm going to have to speak really quickly. First is the proposed 11.58% tax, property tax increase. That is phenomenal. That is, that's just cannot happen. If you want some more on numbers, for our home, and taking into consideration that our taxable market value went up by 19.3%, okay? That first, from 279,514 to 33,578, which means that next year, we would be paying nearly $4,000 in property taxes, up from 39,83 last year.
So you had 39,83 last year, so it would be 4,000?
Yes.
So $117?
Yes.
Okay. And if I can ask, did, did you watch the presentation last week?
Did.
You watched the presentation, and you watched the council minute or whatever? The explanation as to why that, and that's a big number. I agree, that's a big number.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. However, I, I question your, how do I say it? Your truthfulness that...
What do you think I'm not being truthful? Not being truthful about?
Well, when I look at your town hall meeting, last on your agenda is public safety.
There was no agenda for the town hall meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Presentation.
Presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it was the last thing on...
It was the last thing on the slide.
Thing that you talked about after the introductory slide.
Okay. If that was the agenda, yeah, that was just the list of things that I kicked off.
Right, the thing you actually talked about.
Correct.
So, but still having said, what do you think we're not being truthful about in that presentation that you saw last, last Monday night? What was not truthful about that presentation?
That you're saying that public safety is first on your, first on your agenda, when, yeah, there was talk of defunding the police.
There was no talk. There was never talk by the city council or in this city hall of defunding the police department. There was never talk of that.
Explicitly many times, and every single one of us said, "No."
Yes. So let's dispel that completely.
Okay. Well, I will just go back to the property.
And I agree with you, it's a big number.
It's a huge number.
But I'm more concerned, do you think we're being mistruthful or distruthful here? An example of that?
Well, I, my example was that public safety was the last thing on your agenda to talk about. And, you know, and, and coupled with the fact that now federal attorney Luger has had to step in and...
Where's he stepped in? You mean in...
In Minneapolis and St. Paul, and, you know, and I spoke with them, and they confirmed that they're working with, you know, other law enforcement agencies. Crime is a huge issue.
Yes, it is. Which is why we're adding three, three positions in the police department this year and three positions next year, according to the budgets that we have drawn up.
And what about all of the other positions that you've added?
Individual portion of our general fund budget?
Yes, it is.
30, 35, 40% in that?
Yes.
No, I saw another slide about the budget, and the only line item I could see on there was the fire pension. I couldn't find anything else on what you were proposing for the police department.
Funded through, I mean, it's funded through a number of things, but I think the line you wanted to be looking at is our general fund budget. Generally, when we have those documents, we don't lay it out by, you know, department by department. There's the budget line item for the general fund budget, which is where the vast majority of property taxes go, and that's where the vast majority of funding or city services, including our police department, comes from.
I can, I can kind of the pie chart.
Okay, well, by doing that, it's, you know, I'm here to understand as well and ask questions. You know, and, and I was, I met with three of you, and then I believe the next council meeting, I was described as passionate, and I was described as not understanding all of the issues. And so that's disappointing.
You say who? Like, did, you looked at me when you said that?
No, Jamie.
Because I was like, we need to meet.
Patrick.
Is it bad to be passionate? I mean, I, I think, I think we all can agree you're passionate about what you talk about, and I don't think it's a bad...
Yes. But am I knowledgeable?
Well, I mean, we're correcting here the notion that the police budget is in the general fund, and you were looking for it, and you, I mean, it was a matter of where to find it. So it's not, not, not knowledgeable, you just perhaps don't understand budgets. You don't understand, and city budgets are complex. Yeah.
Okay, but if you gave me the information, I would understand it. I feel like you hide behind these big numbers, and, and you're not providing the detail to us.
I will say, you go on our budget website.
Every last bit of that information is there.
Before I was on council, I actually went through and like read through all of it, and you can get a breakdown of everything.
Yep.
It's really, really helpful.
It's there.
Yeah.
And, and we've made, we've made that effort over the last couple of years to put that out there. And I think we just had this discussion last week, that the information we provide now on the budget is significantly better than it's been over the, in my time on the council, we didn't have anywhere near this amount of information that was available publicly and literally at the click of a button.
Okay, so, to that point, the briefing. The briefing only, I feel, highlights all of the wonderful things that you're doing. Instead of informing us about these things, about where to find the information, that is helpful. That helps us...
It's good feedback.
Be accountable.
Good feedback, and we'll pass it on to the communication staff. But again, I...
Only a pat on the back. And listen, I have been in communications my whole life.
As I have as well. And I think the briefing is fantastic, and it wins awards.
It does.
Yes.
As a resident, I will tell you, it's not really all that helpful. Because when we were talking about local options, sales tax, you only talked about the benefits to the city. You did not talk about the cost to the residents.
Actually, we did.
You did. You managed the $75.
And I'm going to have to cut you off, we're at seven minutes now. But schedule it.
I want, I want to, I would really like to know how many positions have been added in the city for the last five years that do not support fire and police? And a huge part of, of keeping our community safe is neighborhood watch, and why they're not being supported with an additional FTE. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I didn't exactly know the process, so I just sort of showed up.
Perfect. It works just fine. Thanks for being here.
Glad there was just a few people. Otherwise, that probably would have gotten this time. Okay, I'm Bruce Chapey. Recently moved to Bloomington, although I've worked here in the city for about seven years for Bron InterTech down on Hampshire. For those who may not know, Bron's a multi-faceted construction and environmental services company. And I just want to make sure you know, I'm here as a resident, and I'm not representing that company at all. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to thank the council for their adoption of the resolution last January about the climate emergency in Bloomington. I read the text of that resolution and encouraged state and federal government to take action. I also noticed that the city said they'll take some action too. And, you know, if this is truly an emergency, it's probably good that we get on it. I had the pleasure of talking about climate-related issues with Emma Struss, your staff person. She was helpful, knowledgeable, and we had about a 45-minute discussion about, you know, what's been going on, and very helpful. So she directed me to look at the, the most recent committee report, and then I kind of cut to the end and said, "Well, what, what are you doing now? You know, what's new?" And there were what appeared to be some sort of minimal improvements here and there. I asked her, "Well, you know, has staff increased? Have you really gone in?" And she's, "Not really," you know? And so I guess I'm left with, "Where's the emergency?" I know there's a lot of competing things going on. Everyone here has got a pet peeve or a pet project, pet project. So anyway, I just ask that the city continue to keep that as a priority. I am getting kind of concerned. That's, I'm speaking...
You're here? I don't know. For sure.
So...
If you spoke with, with Emma, you know that our sustainability commission and council member, Lomans on the sustainability commission, and council member D'Alessandro has spoken about it quite a bit as well, as have others. But the sustainability commission and the city's working toward, the two biggest contributors to greenhouse gases are transportation and buildings, basically.
Right.
And trying to figure out ways and get our arms around how, how to manage that. And we passed a couple of things last year in terms of buildings, the time of energy, the time of sale, energy disclosure, which I think helps people, it at least compels people, doesn't require people, but compels them to tune up the house as much as they can before they put it on the market, because it's one more indicator for a buyer to look at. And then looking at our commercial buildings as well, and trying to get a handle as to how they're doing and where they can improve as well. And so we're doing better from a building standpoint. Not great, I'll admit, not great. It is challenging. And then the, the transportation, we committed to 10 new F-150 Lightnings. Just have to get them off the production line now and actually start delivering those darn things. And, but it is, it's a, that is a tough nut to crack on a large scale. It really is.
You know, and I'm not going to spend my time now, you know, kind of throwing ideas out there. I could...
Have ideas, love to hear them. I mean, that's what I was going to ask you, Mayor, I want to ask what would look like action for you. Your thoughts, Bruce?
Well, you know, I've, in the past, I've kind of been thinking about this. Like I said, I recently moved here. I was kind of gave some of these same ideas to the city of Chanhason last year, where I was living last year. So, you know, there, there's just, you know, you know, resolve to take, you know, and I don't know, I don't want to read all these through, because it's not like, you know, you know, the track, you know, track things. I didn't get a sense from Emma that we were really tracking towards the goals for 2035. How are we doing? You know, the plan was made in 2018. How are we doing? You know, you talk about building codes, you know? We can talk about, you know, things like making sure we get rid of natural gas water heaters, if possible, when there's changeovers. You know, trying to go to more electric, because the electric is going to have more of a renewable base than natural gas. You know, we can't heat buildings in this, in this climate with electric. That's off the table. But we can do things like natural gas water heaters. You know, put in, building code changes that require you to put in the infrastructure for charging station, you know? Require it of commercial building, you know? My office, I'm amazed we don't have anything for, you know, charging station. You know, I see you've got something here. I was just at the mall the other day, and I saw some, you know, down off of Normandale. So anyway, I'd like to see some things like that.
If I may, just real quickly, Bruce, we are part of what the mayor was referring to around our large commercial buildings, is a, an opportunity to do basically an audit of your building, and it's voluntary right now, but more than 70-some buildings have already agreed to do it. And what that does essentially is allow the, the building owners, if you will, and the, the lessees there, understand what their utilization is, which gives you that first line of defense in terms of... So you may want to advocate that your company participate in that, and then Emma can help with that. Because if, if we get another company participating in that, that might help a lot. And then maybe your own company would have actionable steps they could take, you know?
All right. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Bruce, the council actually did authorize funding for a study that we're doing right now on the EV chargers. So that the whole, the whole point of that is to have the data so we can go out and start applying for grants that we can encourage that sort of policy and try to match folks up with the funding to do it throughout the community. So that is high on the priority scale.
And I will say that there, I believe, St. Louis Park and Minneapolis both tried to require EV charging as part of building code, and I think that's in court right now. I think there was some kind of state mandate that said it couldn't work, whatever. So it's a good fight, and they're fighting it, but we're kind of stuck in that space as well.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Thanks for your...
Talk to you.
Mike? Good evening.
I think the, the weight in the mood a little bit is, I'm a longtime listener, first time follower. I think, I think that's what we say. So I guess the, the one topic that I would talk to is just National Night Out, number one. Your budget, Department lead?
Oh, Kari.
Kari attended?
Yes.
And so, I mean, I'm one of the young pups in my neighborhood. So that just kind of tells you the age demographic, and it's great. It's, it's been a wonderful neighborhood. They, you know, it's, it's what you would probably, you know, quarterly, the ladies get together and meet at houses. I mean, it's everything that you would think of from the, from the 60s when Bloomington and the original homeowners were there. Just wonderful people. And National Night Out was, you know, we, apparently, the new person on the block gets to host it, so I've been hosting it for, you know, 15 years. Yeah, exactly. But it's been fun, right? I mean, we, we get to know each other, we know each other very well. We had a two-year pause, you know? And this was our first year to really get back together and just to, you know, connect, reconnect again. The one thing that did happen, so I really appreciated the, the city coming out and the outreach. I'm trying to remember the sergeant that was with her, and I don't recall his name, but, you know, very nice. But we also ended up with a little political organization showing up at our National Night Out. And so it was kind of troubling that, you know, and, you know, it ended up by getting political, and some people ended up by being frustrated and leaving Neighborhood National Night Out. So I don't know how, so I'm, I'm not sure how to, how to, how to address it. It's just concerning.
Was, Mike, was it, was it people coming into the neighborhood to campaign?
It, it was not a campaign. It's a referendum issue that's been kind of ping ponging around a little bit.
So were they, were they advocating for or against?
They were advocating for. And, and, you know, and I love myself a good political debate. I have no problems. I have no issues, you know, having a political conversation. I try to stay very informed, you know? But it was just kind of disappointing.
Did they hang out at your particular one, or were they moving through the neighborhood?
They kind of hit our neighborhood and then moved on to the next neighborhood. It was just, you know, and, you know, I was obviously, I would say I'm neutral on the topic. I am more of a, I would like to see a little bit more before we did it, but, you know, just before we make our final decisions on it. But that is just, you know, one, one concern. I don't know, I just don't want it more.
I agree, and I think, and I've heard that from others also. We've had, we had a couple of candidates show up and, you know, shake hands and take pictures and kiss babies and that kind of stuff. And I think it made some, some folks uncomfortable. And I think we're, I don't know that we have, we have specific rules saying no...
I think there's a rule.
Either, there's a rule, there's something, a rule out there where you can say, "Yeah, I want to have politicians or folks show up to my..." And the point is, I mean, it's your party.
Well, yeah.
You can say, "You know what? We're just not comfortable with this. I'd appreciate it if you would leave."
Yeah, and, well...
I know, I know, but you don't want to do that. It's not a neighborly thing. I know what you mean.
There's like this, there was this cliff, right?
I know what you mean.
It, it happened pretty quick.
If I could, Mike, maybe I'd suggest just sending a note to Katie Zeroll or just have a consultation out there about how maybe going into next year, we can be a little bit thoughtful.
Just a general, general reminder.
Yeah, giving block captains maybe some tips on how to handle that situation.
And then just some quick feedback on what we saw here, trying to try to pay attention to things. You know, some of the people are expressing some issues on the budget. I think where people are, and I, right away, when I first saw like the second or third slide, no offense, I just kind of said, "Well, this is useless," is that you had the general budget line, and it's like 80% of your, or 90% of your budget. I'm like, "Okay, well, your reader at home has no shot of understanding this." So it's just, and I think, yeah, I mean, have that information generally available. Now, you know, quick search, and I was able to find last year's budget online. I'm able to break it all down, and, you know...
As we get deeper into the budget process, we generally do break that up.
I think people just kind of, I mean, when you come up with that larger number, people are, their radar is going to be up instantly, maybe to, to have that more detailed information to help people understand where that's coming from. I think, I think that helps. And then, you know, people are talking about the, and I'm kind of following off other topics, people talk, environmental stuff. You know, I just, I just feel like there's so many organizations out there that are just willing to do things. I mean, I just took my last daughter to college, flew her to Manhattan, and dropped her off. But, you know, I mean, getting her Silver Stars, right? I mean, yeah, hey, grab a pick and go whack out some buckthorn. It's a lot of fun, let me tell you. You know, I mean, there's, you know, to help get the Girl Scout Silver Star Award, right? And working with the Isaac Walton League. There's so many groups that are already just ready to be engaged. There's so many groups that are already just ready to be engaged. It, it's really, you know, hey, you know, that's, at some point, you, you got to do your share, right? I mean, you, you have, you have a role to play. And, and to maybe more emphasize more of that, um, it, um, I'm not a big government guy.